You're a free beach. Why do we tell the people to the right, oh, you're a paid beach? That's kind of difficult to ask.
Sorry.
Hey. Clay, I'm not here to solve your problem, boy. Here's the thing.
I thought we were here to solve.
No, no, there we are. But I'm not here to solve your problem. I understand that you're, that you're negative period. You don't like it. You don't think it can work. All this, okay, fine.
I just want to clarify.
We just want to.
I have your permission to clarify.
We want to be in unison with this. That way we can help each other. All we're looking for. Uh, so no action on that? Agreed? Okay, uh, number ten is discussion, consideration, take action for audit delay resolved. Uh, do I have a motion to discuss?
I'm very interested in discussing this, yes.
Okay, uh, this is a, uh, has been, has been an issue. Uh, Ms. Debbie put out a, put out an email and a, um, posting on the website about this. She talks about the issues that the state has had, that we've had here at the city. And with all of that happening, um, it, it's put us behind. And now we're trying to get caught up. You see, Artman Jones, you stated that the mayor can order an audit and then you state that it's states law. Well, that's, that part's correct. You know, it is state law and it's a normal calendar, uh, part of business that, that we do here. I have only been mayor two years and part of that was through the COVID stuff. So we're trying to get caught up. Does, does it, is everybody seen this letter or it was posted?
The letter's ridiculous. When she, if she wrote it, why did she say, and she dug her heels in? It's written in third person, so I don't know why Debbie would write it that way.
So now you make it so that Debbie didn't write this?
And then ridiculous?
I also talked, I also called and talked to, um, Catherine Overbeck Maxwell, um, with a question. And she stated that she has sent several requests for information that she needed over since, since December. And, and the, the information had not been returned to her. When I talked to her Friday, she didn't even know that Debbie was gone and had resigned and didn't have a contact number. And she also said that because there's been no replies for her to continue, she may even have to take this off her schedule. So that would mean delaying the two, twenty twenty, um, audit again.
Well, that's pretty much, Georgia, could you reach out to her and try to reestablish?
So you're saying that Debbie has been left messages to get this all taken care of?
That's what Catherine told me.
And what, do we have that in writing or anything?
No, I'm just saying that's what Catherine told me.
Let's assume that that is true. Because we, I'm telling you, we're in a spot here legally. Legally, we are in a spot and we have to get it resolved. Too sweet regardless of how we all want.
No matter who you shop here, what's your status?
My fix is let's get it figured out.
Debbie does still have access to her emails right now, but while she's working everything transitioned over. So anything that is immediate attention, she is forwarding over to Nolan and myself and.
And, and mind you, she came in and worked what, six hours, seven hours Saturday?
She's here ten thirty to seven thirty on Saturday.
Yeah. That she, she came up here to try to keep us afloat. I mean, she just wasn't waving off all the duty.
But here's my point, Clay. We've known this for several months. Here's my suggestion, thank you, brother. Here's my suggestion to help fix this. Let's bring, we have, we're short staffed. We're driving down, I mean, we're working, working, we're, uh, unreasonably to the, to a point, only to a point. Okay, I mean, I know, Georgia, you're not going to be taking advantage of here. But the whole thing is, wouldn't it just be wise and wouldn't maybe? It's maybe. Get it done wise maybe three or four months ago. Let's bring in some support. Let's bring somebody in specifically, whatever it takes, to resolve this issue and get us caught up.
We, we.
Every day with this auditor. We put them over there in our office.
Ms. Debbie was the one that's in charge of the financials and she has been trying to address this. You know, none of us are involved in that, that activity, but we trust her to get it taken care of. And I fully, especially being her, that she is, she's tried to get it resolved.
There's no question of that.
Yeah, so.
There's no question of that.
But what?
But here we are.
But, but for her to be malintent.
No, no malintent.
Okay, well, that's what, that's what seems to be the accusation.
A simple solution. Let's bring some people in, try a person in. If they have to sit over there in this auditor's office, coordinate and we get it off of the backs of our staff so they can do their regular work.
The staff has to be involved because it involves them in the access and knowing what is what.
What about the sense of material?
Yeah, I mean.
Bring some support in here, so.
We're, we're working on to get as much support as we can at this time, so.
Yeah, so, you know, he'll bring us up a good, and, uh, this is, to me, and you know, my number one job as an alderman is to keep the damn city out of the court of law. Right, so many to resolve this quickly. And if we need to bring in an accountant for four to six weeks to help expert like this, I think that's what we should do.
There's not.
Do you, do you know, Georgia, if we have any letters from the state just giving us a little time or anything? Do you know if there's been anything like that?
I haven't looked for anything. I can start that first thing.
Okay, yeah, maybe we should do is make sure we do have some grace there because apparently we haven't, we haven't got any notices.
But we had three years, did it not, three years?
Well, you gotta remember, three, there was, some of that was COVID.
I'm not trying to say why, I'm just saying we actually have three years of audits to do.
The state was shut down as far as getting the monitors out.
Okay, with all that, but I'm saying that we still have these three years to do, right?
Yeah, that's, that's my point.
Yeah, three years to do.
Regardless of what happened. At some point, we're going to run out of grace. And I, and none of us know what that day is, so let's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, let's see if we can find something that would say.
But be proactive now and let's take care of the thing.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I expected that we would be proactive.
Happen like the.
Because she's been proactive.
Well, I have.
Go ahead.
She gave a report back in March sixteenth. Audit is well underway with Catherine Overbeck. We are in process of locating all the records. And this awesome report, I believe, Artman Jones turned this in, we are not the only ones out of compliance. They're not the only ones out of compliance. You know, we're.
Partly, partly, that's not my request, that is from Pam or Sarah.
Excuse me. Pam, Sarah, thank you, but we're not the only ones.
That's not the point.
Chop chop. But when she's got so many other, yeah.
I, you know, I know we got a lot of responsibilities, but we as a city have, and have ones right there that we need to get our audits done. And if it takes getting some part time, you know, some additional help or short period of time in order to get us over the hump, we have to dig down and do it.
Awesome. Got to, uh, any motion on that?
I make a motion that David Dinday handles it. You might as well.
Okay. Thanks, we do, we vote on that? Okay, Ron.
Do we, we both, do we have an action item out of this at all?
I would say that, uh, the action item would be we, if, if necessary, we hire help and we have Georgia make, find it, what the information she can get. Go ahead, boy.
Let's see what she finds and gets in touch with, uh, Overbeck and we will find additional help.
We need to have a.
I'll spear in, okay?
If we need to have an urgency session of, of council with just that item on the agenda, I strongly urge us to do that.
I'll spear in.
I'll talk to Catherine myself. She said that she just didn't have everything, but once she got it, she could go.
Okay, we'll find it.
Item number eleven, discuss, discussion, consideration, take action for city meetings and possibly, possibility of violating First Amendment rights of citizens investigation. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I don't have a motion to discuss that. I don't understand.
Artman Jones, you, you've made, um, a statement that the mayor was violating First Amendment rights, correct?
It was an opinion.
Well, it was, you know, it was put in record. It didn't say.
I have an opinion.
It was an accusation, yeah.
No, if I feel it's, it's an opinion. I witnessed and saw what's happened with the state when it comes to voting. It's my opinion.
And we're talking about city meetings.
City, the First Amendment?
Yeah.
You know, this, this is really, this bill, this is, uh, I'm not, I'm not, wasn't informed that I would be interrogated.
Oh, we don't, we're just trying to get.
No, this is an interrogation.
So are you feel that way?
May I add something?
Absolutely.
This is the report you had last month. This is the report one had entered into the records. And it says, Mayor, you're not the city of Jamaica Beach, the citizens are. They're the heart and soul of this community. Your duty as mayor is to ensure all ordinances are enforced. You are violating your own city ordinance twenty eighteen dash two, the rules of decorum. You have violated their First Amendment rights to be heard as you limit their right to speak on the agenda.
Yes, I'll stand by that.
And what's, what's your basis on that?
The people want to be heard and they've come to you and said so. And so, and our, our council members here also ask you to let citizens have the more input.
And we get input every day, but that's beside the point. At these meetings, we have, are you not aware that we have workshop meetings at five thirty when needed? We've had three of them in the last year and a half.
I've been here for every meeting.
Okay, and we, we actually, as need, because Debbie would send out, does anybody have something to discuss?
The people have asked and asked, begged to have more say. We need to have two meetings a month, a workshop so people can speak, and then a business meeting.
We have, do you know the type of meetings there are in the state?
Yes, I am aware.
Okay, and you, this is a business meeting, it's not a town hall style meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they, they, they come to talk about the agenda. The five thirty meeting was more of a workshop style meeting where we could openly discuss and work in, in items with, with the public. And that had worked when we've done it, but there's usually, there hasn't been enough time. There are enough items on, that's been brought up where we would have that because it is a, how much time does it take to do? To set up a meeting, uh, just a meeting? It's a lot of time, energy and money in it.
If you have one every, every two weeks or two a month, we will not be able to provide you with the information that you need.
You know, here's another old man, Stephen, why you two guys are arguing this? You're getting a, a number of the oldest confused old man, more and more confused. That's all I'm saying. I don't understand the back and forth and the spine, whatever. Read what you just said that was in there again, what you just stated. That's what I heard.
Just the last statement. You have violated the First Amendment rights to be heard as you limit the right to speak on agenda items only.
No, there's something about ordinances, wasn't it?
Okay, um, violating ordinance number twenty eighteen dash two.
Yeah, I, I think it's just that simple. We have an ordinance that guarantees the right for our citizens to speak on non-agenda items. We have it. When you were sworn in, am I wrong in right? You, you, you swore to, to, um, enforce the ordinance, as I see. And to be in for our city, and for our city to be in compliance with the ordinance. And we're not. If, if you want, this is the ordinance right here and it says, public comments at council meetings.
Do you have that, that actual ordinance?
Yeah, I have it and I have, I'll read it. Attendees that completed the silent sheet will be recognized before the individuals who did not sign up. The public comment period on agenda survives opportunity for members of the public to speak and ask questions on any topic that is on the agenda. Attendees, attendees may also make comments on any items, um, not on the posted meeting agenda. But are hereby advised that state law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any item unless it appears to be on the agenda. Inquiries from the speakers about matters not listed on the agenda will even be directed to city staff or placed on a future agenda for city council to consider. There will be an opportunity to speak on covering hearing items. As those items are announced, no person may speak without being recognized by the mayor or the presiding officer.
Does it state what type of meeting that would be? Does it state what type of meeting that is for? Uh, well, that's not correct.
I, I.
State law, state law right here.
I'm not going to argue this, I'm saying, here's what I was told.
Well, we cannot do that. We cannot do that in an executive meeting. We cannot do that in an emergency meeting. There, there is many meetings where we cannot do that type of.
I'm not going to debate here in the ordinance.
And here is the state law. If we are, oh, we, the city ordinance cannot overstate state law. The Act allows the public to observe the open portion of a meeting. However, the Attorney General has concluded that the Act does not give members of the public a right to speak on items considered at an open meeting. Such a right exists only if a specific state law requires a public hearing on an item.
I, I ask about that. And I ask to you female orders. And what they told me was that cities have the right, by ordinance, okay, to establish their own rules in regards to that, and that's what we did.
The type of meeting, no, the type of meeting, you got to speak.
One of the reasons that, wait a minute, wait a minute, one of the reasons that was put in is the cause of the complexity of some things, such as the, um, like this we're going through right now, the Houston Indian School District. You know, school district boards, uh, complicated mergers and things of that nature. And what I was told was that our, our, our ordinance is applicable.
Okay.
So if you disagree with it, then I, I don't say no more.
State law, that's all I'm reading is state law. If, if we have an ordinance that it cannot supersede state law, but I can say this, what you're talking about is a workshop style.
Nope, I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm just talking about what this ordinance says.
I do know what we're talking about.
I'm not going to interpret the ordinance.
And what I'm saying is work sessions are essentially a shirt sleeves meeting where the council discusses issues informally to achieve a more complete understanding of one of or more subjects. There is five types of meetings. There is a regular, a business, open meeting, and all, they all mean the same, a special or an emergency meeting, a workshop meeting, a public hearing. And five would be an executive session. And then I'd like to add in the sixth type of meeting, which is where citizens actually come in and call me a business.
What meeting we're having now?
This is a business meeting.
Okay, and I think it applies to that.
Okay, I think, I think it would apply to a workshop meeting.
But anyway, and there's a foot note, the goat's a fish, it talks about what you're talking about.
Okay. Here, here's my issue. I have never wanted to shut anyone up because I get calls every day. I visit with people, staff visits with people, and we, we love it. Um, I mean, most everyone out here I've spoken to it's several times.
Clay, this is, this is all, this is not, the thing is that.
I tell you what I'll do is I'll, I will talk to our legal department and see what they recommend. And if they say in the business meeting, we can do that, then, then I'll be more than happy to, to implement that, re-implement that.
The ordinance is going in place.
Okay, and so is the state law.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
And the state law gets specifics.
And by practice, and by practice, until recently we changed it, we've done it. We have allowed citizens to do this.
That was done, that was done. If you know, have we, when Mayor Spicel was here, I mean, he did a fantastic job. Did he have two meetings a month?
I'm not asking that, I'm not going that way.
Well, you said we've always had, that's not, that's not.
I'm not trying to get more meaning for mine.
That's not a correct statement.
What, and, oh, it is, in the past, we have allowed people to do this. Is that not correct?
Uh, we have allowed them in workshop meetings and in all meetings. Not, not all meetings, I'm sorry, you're.
Can I have one quick moment?
Absolutely.
Clay Morris, Mayor, current sitting Clay Morris did not, did not impose this proceeding. This was per, proposed and installed by the previous administration of commons only meeting, being made on agenda items. Down hundred percent positive for this.
Yeah, hold on, I know that we have this. I heard it's the we're not in compliance with.
I just wanted to get it out there, this did not change during Mayor Morris's current term.
I would ask you to provide.
Okay, now, I guess what, what I'm trying to, to say is, back to the original reason we're having this, is we need to find out, do we need to vote on a further investigation of First Amendment rights not being done? Okay, I would like that to go on record, please. I have a motion that it is, issue is solved.
Make motion, we don't discuss it, illegal.
Well, I just want to make sure we keep, keeps us on legal issues. Do we have a vote? Did everybody get on that? That, that it is dead? Is it three, two? Vote is three, two?
Yeah.
Uh, Artman Jones, how do you vote?
No vote.
Yeah, I'm staying with it.
In three, yes.
I'm staying, if I don't even realize what the vote is, you're, what's going on with that?
I'm going to conflict this, I still.
The next item for discussion and consideration and take action for the possible conflict of interest investigations. This is something that's very important we need to get to the bottom of. May I have a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss possible conflict of interest investigation there.
May I have a second?
One second.
Can we, do we have the law or any, yeah. There's state statutes that, that is required and bid processes, thank you. And, uh, we have been, you know, good with that and followed all of those processes from day one. Uh, though it continually gets brought up as a negative. You know, we're lucky in our city, uh, have someone like Russell that cares about the Jamaica Beach as much as he does. Though he's not the only local contractor that does work for us, most all of our contractors are very attentive to the city's needs. Like Brad South, dropping everything to come assist with his equipment during our time of need with fire over at, over, over, over Mar- Marine Drive. Branch Construction, who is, always goes to the extra step in every project. And as mayor in the city of Jamaica Beach, I thank each of you for being mayor during times of need. But I want to address, why does this keep coming up as a complaint? Artman Jones, you want to elaborate?
Why don't you explain it to the city? Why don't you explain it to the city?
I just did, I just did. We, we have no conflict of interest here, as, as the state laws.
Well, it doesn't pass the smell test, if you ask me. It doesn't look like an alderman is making a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from.
Hundred and thirty?
Now it's a hundred and thirty, I started out at a hundred and forty.
Forty, you're not sitting here.
I have invoices that I've gotten with Open Records that total a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And when most people come up to me and say, oh, no, he does all that volunteer. No, he doesn't volunteer. He's been paid to do it.
Okay, so, uh, Artman Jones, um, I'm just, over what time period was that?
About six years.
So about six years, a hundred, so roughly twenty thousand a year. Wait a minute, no. Okay, no, so, 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 no, no, I just want to know, so this is, and does this have a, a material effect on the city, may Mr. Man?
Is that not a?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm.
You, 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 wait a minute, that's, that's a question, please.
You can, you can take a turn after I get my question answered, yeah. So is, is this in violation of any ordinances we have about bid size, no bid sizes? Because some of these are no bidding, correct, Mr. Man?
Correct, we have a fifteen thousand dollar ordinance where anything over fifteen needs to be bid. And, um, most anything, I can say this, there's been several times in, in just in our term that he chose to abstain because it could be something he was bidding on. And we can look that up on record, are you welcome to look up?
I'm aware.
Okay. But to make statements, just broad statements of irregularities and, and breaking of laws is irresponsible. And that's what we're trying to get to the bottom of.
Well, actually, if the city would be more, if the city would be, was more transparent that we are paying a, an alderman for his services, then it would end questions.
Uh, we're not being transparent with that? You said we're not being transparent. Where, where are we not being, where are we not being transparent?
Are we not releasing the financials, the check registries, all of my work orders, invoices?
No, I've had to ask for the, your work envoys with Open Records.
And have you ever found anything wrong?
You know, this is so unfair for you guys to bring up all of this and.
This is, this is a charge that we, we have been, we have been, you have accused us of.
No, I, I, I totally know what I've said, but, you know, the conflict of interest, if you look up the laws for the conflict of interest, I have questions. And Russell was telling. And Russell, who told me long time ago, he would refuse to, to answer anything with an email.
Correct. Can you follow up why I said that? Because you share confidential documents.
When have I ever shared confidential?
Just three weeks ago with Mayor Morris. I saw it. I don't want to get into that. You broke this up earlier, why I don't email you, and I told you I will not do it because you constantly share.
So I'm shut out of information when I have questions.
Well, I, I can't give information to you if I'm worried you're gonna share it. My job as an alderman is to protect this city.
Your job as been an alderman is to protect your, your money that you make from the city, because that's how it looks to people.
Ooh, ooh. Wait a minute, stay in here, Ross.
Give me a minute. That's, if I'm not being attacked by that, but you...
Sit down, Ross.
So my job as an alderman is to protect, make sure I'm making monies from the city.
I don't know, I don't know. It would be just nice that you were more transparent about, about it, that I don't have to ask questions about it.
How, how can we be more transparent? We, Gil, you give us a minute.
May I enter the conversation?
Maybe if there was, um, maybe, because it just looks bad, why not hire someone else to do the job? There's many handmen that are here in the city.
I actually try to find them, I do try to find them.
Did you put out something, because I've talked to handman that would like to...
Tell them, please, bring them a card, bring my last thing, put it in there. Um, and I, and I do that, and I told them, no.
So if you have all the checks, you would see where we power other people also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so he, he's not getting all the business from the city?
I never say that.
Okay, well, yes, sir.
Civilization, please. I want to read this item, and what it says, discussing consideration and take action for possible conflict of interest investigation. To me, this is the same scenario of the dollars paid to the police, to city administrator when the police chief and police, same, same, same scenario. So, what, I would make the motion is that, yep, we do an investigation, and we clear this up, just like we cleared up the other thing, we put it together, obviously, the three of you guys had some real grievances over the year, that's okay, I think all city councils have this. I'm learning fast. So that's my motion, let's investigate it, and how would you say to do that? How would it be investigated?
Uh, well, the only thing that needs to be done is a, the, the document signed stating that there is no conflict of interest.
Whatever.
That's, that's what the state requires. Do you, Russell, do you have that?
So, so why don't we have, why don't we have...
Well, I have a question for Dennis.
Gil, let, Gil finish. Gil?
I'm sorry for interrupting. Um, what I'd like to know, who, who signed the work orders for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of work?
There was not a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of work done at all at one time.
No, but who...
I don't want to get into the work order. Gil?
Who, who, some, who?
Please put in order.
I mean, did he just go around the city and go, oh, you know, trim that tree? Or was there a work order issue?
Since I've been here, yes.
There's been a work order since you've been here.
I can't, I can't answer part of that.
Okay, thank you.
And I can't answer what happened before I was mayor here.
No, I...
But I, I would assume he came as called.
But, but the real question is, is there a conflict of interest? So what I make the motion is that we, that we go the right way, the right path, the right procedure, and put this thing to bed.
I think the first thing we need to do is define what a conflict of interest is by state.
Do we need to do that, or do we need to have someone that...
We may not need the investigation if you know what the definition...
This is the same thing, I would like to say, oh, just agree with this and, and make a determination, and then it's over with. That's what I, my recommendation.
Means I'm being accused of all this? Can I speak? Does anybody, anybody care what I have to say?
Go ahead.
Actions I've put in?
I do not.
This is a deal.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Russell R. Purdis, I'm currently serving as your alderman pro tempore, and I own and operate West End Maintenance. West End Maintenance has been going in business for fifteen years now. We're local, small, general contracting business, where our license with us in the Jamaica Beach, Galveston. We hold a bond and a liability insurance policy in the millions. We have worked without exaggeration on over ten percent of homes in Jamaica Beach, including the homes of this curtain, audience, and some of these people that have made accusations against me. Never once had a problem, clients have always been happy. There's just a little backstory, so you guys know where I've come from. All right? I would like to thank everybody for the free press. Please visit our website and Facebook, page to get in touch with us. I first started working for the city of Jamaica Beach in two thousand and eight, directly after Hurricane Ike. Two thousand and eight is the first check I recall ever rece- receiving from the Jamaica Beach. Ever since then, I've been known as the city's go-to guy. I've had the pleasure to work with several city managers, mayors, directors of operation. I was an awes- I was often invited to their Christmas parties and their social events, um, even though I wasn't an employee, I was just like family from the beginning. I worked diligently to make sure myself and my company have followed the rules and procedures ever since my time in office. Within the last few years, with so much interest in my position and working for the city, I've taken even more steps than usual to make sure both myself and the city have done everything correctly and above board. First off, every term, I file a non-conflict of interest form documentation every new term I've been elected. It's right here, filed every year, it's available on the city website as it's supposed to be. Sharon Bowers asked me about my conflict of interest in a recent county meeting regarding the chapter one seventy-one. This is gonna be long, guys, but this is my personal name and my company at stake, so please allow it. Meetings can long enough, right? Okay, local government, chapter one seventy-one, this is what Ms. Bowers referred to. Okay, right here. A public official has a substantial interest in a business if the official, one, owns ten percent or more of the voting stock or shares in the business entity. Owns either ten percent or fifteen thousand dollars more of the fair market value of the business or entity. Receives funds from the business or entity that exceed ten percent of the person's gross proceeding here. All right, nonsense. An officer must file a statement if the officer or officer's family member has an employment other than the business relationship with a vendor that results in the officer's family member receiving more than taxable income of twenty-five hundred dollars. None, none of this is applying to me.
This, doesn't it also state that you have to file a conflict of interest for each occurrence?
Never. Each term.
I'll disagree with you with that, but it's okay.
It does state that if I am...
That's a very good question.
This is a lot of information, guys, and this is all I spent the last two days on.
I have read it.
Okay, well, I'm done with that, I'm trying to, to refocus. This last term, with all the new sudden interest in my company, West End Maintenance, our previous director of finance, city secretary, Debbie and myself, reached out to TML and reviewed all the rules and regulations, okay? Whole togo, we went over. Okay, upon completion, I can state that, to my knowledge, I have followed every rule, guideline, and submitted all proper documentation. To take it a step further, we reached out to our legal department to cover all of Alderman Jones's, Deborah Talbert's, Sharon Bowers, Dale Hubert's questions and open records requests and comments regarding West End Maintenance. The answers we received from legal is, you're great, keep doing exactly what you're doing. As far as abstaining from voting on particular items of your company or currently working on or submitting a bid, they advised, keep doing exactly what you're doing, abstain from the vote, but not the discussion, there's no conflicts of interest that they say. When it comes to the budget workshops and approval process, I am doing everything right. The work I complete for the city is less than one percent of the overall budget, okay? All the work West End Maintenance does is less than one percent of the budget. This hundred and something thousand dollars, or a hundred and thirty, or the more we talk, while I'm gonna come in tomorrow, it's a hundred and eighty. My ten ninety, ten ninety-nines from the city of Jamaica Beach are less than one percent of my annual sales. I could leave it without a problem, wouldn't hurt my business at all, but I'll be damned, I'm proud of it. I love working for the city, I'm proud of what I accomplished. Why should I stop? Because I have one percent of the population that's mad at everything? I'm not gonna do it. I'd also like to note, this is information, the previous mayor provided a pest control service while he served, and he still does. Esco Pest Control still provides all the city pest control needs, nobody had a problem with that. The mayor before him was and still is employed at Moody Bank. This is where the city had done all their banking for many years, nobody had a problem with that. A previous city administrator had his wife working in the office for many years as a secretary. Dear NOLA father, dear NOLA's father, James Thompson, worked for the city water and inspection department for many years. A previous city secretary's husband, the wife, also worked on water operations. I could go on. This is how small cities have always worked, employ the locals, the good people you know and trust. Why is it any different now? Why is all the attention on myself and my company's affairs changed? Does this satisfy you, Alderman Jones, counsel, Deborah Talbert, Sharon Bowers? Okay.
Answer's no, it does not.
Are you good? You finished?
Well, I'm done talking about my company. Do you have comments, please, Danny?
Yeah. That's where I'm at.
Russell?
I make the motion that we, that we, that we go ahead and submit this to authorities and have them vindicate exactly what you're saying.
We've already done that.
I'd like them to, to document the issue.
Yeah. I'd like to see, see it done, let's, let's have them verify that that's what they've done. Kind of let, have we give it, give it to us?
What attorneys?
One.
It, there's, it was not dirty, it's not, there was nothing wrong with it.
I'm not saying that. We have the opportunity. We have the opportunity. Or you can drag it out.
We, we'll go ahead, um, okay, do I have a motion to see if we need to continue the investigation or not?
You're kind of finished by all of a sudden.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you weren't finished.
Okay, means that you guys don't trust my word or what's done or what's...
It was not that.
Well, that was my company. All right, now, my mother's always told me, if you live in glass houses, don't throw stones. If you're pointing a finger at somebody, carefully, you might have several fingers pointing back at yourself. So means, you guys know I wear my emotions on my face, I, there are alarms, I get resting bee face, what have you. Well, after I've been attacked for so long, you know, I, I haven't reached out and hurt anybody, but I did some investigation on my own, all right? So, it turns out, I have had record requests, open record requests pulled on my company for all the city work I've done, right? That's due diligence, that's oversight, I can understand that. However, it's gone a step further. Did you guys know that the citizens, this group, that's well-known, has done open records requests on every permit my company has ever pulled in the city of Jamaica Beach? Every inspection I've ever done with the city of, in, within the city of Jamaica Beach? So these are my personal affairs, my business dealings, not what involves the city. So how far is this gonna go? At, at what point do it, do I feel like I am being slandered or which I'm...
So you're saying that, that this group made those records? You're not accusing me, but you're saying this group got those records? And is there anything illegal about getting those records?
No, there's nothing illegal about getting those records, and due to me being a public official, I can understand and appreciate some citizen oversight. But however, at what point does it go too far? Is that fair? You said you don't come up here to be attacked, I feel like I'm being attacked a little bit, don't? I'm a sensitive guy, didn't you guys know that? Open records request. Tas Jones, February fourteenth, all work orders and invoices from West End Maintenance. Lori Jones, let's get that one. All right, Dale Hubert, any and all contracts entered in between West End Maintenance and the city. All work orders issued by city administrators by West End Maintenance. Done with that, there's more. While we're talking about, is everybody done with my tantrum, or can I keep going? All right, so I'm being accused of... Oh, thank you, Woody. All right.
Please understand, you know, these, these are serious charges, and we're trying to get them addressed, and...
And Clay, that's why I, I... To me, she's so simple, just go back to them, let them look it again, make a file of verification.
We don't need it, more expenses, we don't need it. Go ahead, go ahead, Russell.
Excuse me, guys, I, I do take this personally, this is my livelihood, my family. All right. Conflict of interest. I'd like to point out the meeting of June seventh, two thousand twenty-one, where Alderman Jones partner, Jay Lawburn, proposed a city of Jamaica Beach paid parking plan. It would be a service that he proposed to city council, where he would supply service on the beach fee collection as a subcontractor. This is considered nepotism and is against our city guidelines, and also promotes a conflict of interest. Conflict of interest. It clearly states in our deed restrictions that we are not supposed to sublet our homes. Our homes are single-family homes, okay? Tas Jones, for several years now, has illegally sublet and long-term rented, short-term rented her downstairs house, right? I have not wasted the sting of taxpayers for open records requests, but it's been made, to my knowledge, that she's done so, so often, that she has paid hot tax for illegally subletting her downstairs as a short-term rental. Now also, Tas Jones has to be on the short-term rental, short-term rental liaison department. I, I could go on about more of your city businesses that you run out of your home, all of your websites, your manufacturing of things out of your home. Why is it, why am I being scrutinized? And you point it out to me all the time, but you're not following by the same rules and regulations? It's an honest question, I'm not attacking you. You know, if you go to these websites, I didn't get a clear answer. If you go to these websites, I didn't get a clear answer. Let's go to www.nipplebling.com, www.bodys jewelry by Tazzy.com.
She's not getting paid by the city, Russell.
Neither am I, sir. And how about jewelrybytazzy.com? They all have the address of ninety-four twenty-one Jamaica Beach Road.
Well, Robert has campaigned again.
Bye, guys. Bye, police. The reason I bring these up is we have rules and regulations about running our businesses out of our home. These websites all state that Tazzy herself manufactures these goods, and uses this mailing address in her home.
I make body jewelry. Do you have something wrong with making, with entrepreneurs that?
I love entrepreneurism and capitalism, but however, if you want everybody else to follow the rules, you must also as well, okay? If you go to tossableing.com...
The address is a trap, or are you just...
At this point, I'm so upset, I don't know. If you go to tossableing.com, you can see where her house, the Jamaica Palms, is clearly stated as a short-term rental. Alright, I do not want to go here, but when you throw stones, you know, expect to get them thrown back at you. Fair enough?
Fair.
Excuse me, guys, I do take this personally, I apologize to anybody I offended, but this is my family, my good name, my livelihood.
Maybe if you could have come to me and answered questions when I first came to you, that would have been, rather than ignoring me. Same with you, Mayor.
I'd also like to add that on my invoices, it clearly states, if you have any questions, problems, or anything, please contact me directly. I don't see how I can be any more transparent.
That's not what we were after, discussion, consideration, take action, and possible conflict of interest investigation.
Yeah, this is a...
Where's Harold?
This is a...
Where is Robert at?
This is a public standing.
Yeah, this is a...
It's just about me?
Sure.
Thank Robert.
Okay, and are you down?
It was supposedly div item, that's why.
Guys, guys.
So we're gonna ignore the question, and we're gonna go through this?
At this point, I would like to make an investigation about my company, West End Maintenance, being in conflict of interest with the City of Jamaica Beach. How's that? I'll nominate myself. Alderman Jones, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, turn it up.
Would you like to join me on this?
Be my guest?
No.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second for investigation?
I thought it was ready. I'm in jail. Didn't you second it? What did you say? Didn't you second his?
I second it.
All in favor? All in favor?
No, I'm opposed.
Okay. Woody, how do you vote?
Me and yourself, back, or you and I?
Yeah, just get it done. I mean, we've already, we've already done it. I mean, what are we gonna do? Just help?
Provide documentation.
Have the lawyers look at it again, make it from?
Laura's gonna need to look at it again, if they've already looked at it.
And put something on the city website that states this, makes it clear to everybody.
I think that's fair. That we put the documentation saying that there's nothing wrong, we believe we put it up on the city website for everyone.
I think we should go back to the lawyers, have them send it.
Not the lawyers, not ever.
How do you vote, sir?
Spend more money on legal?
Yes, we can do it, come on.
Got one vote, yes? How do you vote? To do the investigation?
I thought we just made a...
We just all said yes.
No, I didn't see you vote.
I saw his.
I voted Jay, and I'm hoping that the investigation ends today.
I don't know what you voted, yeah.
I'd like to amend it, to where we have it posted on the city website, to make it clear to everyone.
How do you vote?
Yes.
And we will get that done. Item number thirteen, discussion, consideration, take action for grants and funding for city projects and infrastructure, wastewater plant and water line placement.
Yeah, I have been in contact with Randy Webber's office staff on this, as well as I met with Jay Gedelo, the regional director for Southeast Texas for Senator John Corin's office. We were starting to get the ball rolling, they're giving me what the RPs, and if they look like it, what we need to do this. Of course, we need an audit, if one of us had to take place, so.
Right, enough reason we're trying to get that done as soon as possible. The audits, yeah. Guys, you know, we don't need a committee to tell us we have issues, or how to fix them. We know what needs to be done, and we have municipal engineers that detail all the aspects of these jobs out. We, as every other city, have municipal engineers to help us decide where those priorities need to be, how to fix them, and complete a cost estimate on how to fix them. After that, and open bidding processes opened up, as governed by city ordinances and state laws, we are continually researching partners and grants for all of our needed projects. I know, I know most agree that the water is better than it has ever been. Yes, repair costs continue to be a major expense, this is another reason we want to get there, complete all the phases ASAP, but one thing is, we started, yep, we've done four in the last few years, and we started with the oldest first. So as replacements are made, the other existing lines should handle the increased pressure better, therefore driving down the repair costs as we complete each phase from here on out. So, you know, we started, that's why we keep popping them, because the pressure keeps increasing. That's about the water line, and then we go into the wastewater.
I thought we were talking about grants, am I?
We're looking for grants for water.
Yeah, this is some of the issues.
I'll try to make myself clear, yeah, for the infrastructure water line.
Yeah, I can't remember my grant. So what grants are available? Do you think we're...
By parts and infrastructure grants that Congress passed.
Okay, so you're looking at, going after some infrastructure grants that you think may be out there?
No, no, they're not, they're not maybe out there, they're out there.
So they're real things?
Yes, they are real things, it's passed by the last Congress.
Now, not to be negative, but if you would explain to me one thing, every time I've had a discussion on this, what I'm told is that Jamaica Beach is too affluent.
Well, I'm opposed, it is indeed, however, we're going to go with the aged, I'm trying to bring him out here to say...
You're really probably the only, the most knowledgeable on this stuff, that's your real house.
Laura, yes, we're just saying, we're gonna, what we're gonna do is try and bring a field trip to those two, Randy Webber's office and Senator Corin's office, to show them the game infrastructure that we have. Show them, we're gonna pitch it like that.
Pitch it like that, because the real barrier is the scale.
Correct.
On some projects, other projects...
But the infrastructure... It's worth going after.
Well, we're trying, we've been trying to...
It's worth going after.
We've gotten several grants.
It is, it is, it is the worth going after.
And that's what I thought we were talking about. And I'm glad you brought this in, this pipe thing. We have known, council, we've known about this pipe for five years, the fact that we had pipes that were installed, they put in what they did, we've known all about those pipes. And someone asked me, why didn't you do it at the back first? You answered the question, because the old pipes in the old part of town, we fixed that pipe, maybe some of the old pipe will have a better window to fix it, where we don't, we're not forced to spending a tremendous amount of money under duress. So I think we went in the right direction.
That's why we did it, that way.
I think we went in the right direction, and I love the idea of going after these grants. Yeah, at least we're gonna make a shot at it, right?
We're gonna have a big shot. Thank you.
We always go up for the rats.
Yeah, we're always in that. Sorry. Okay. Let me see, the... I just wanted to address the wastewater treatment facility, we've had a redundant system since it was built, though the last ten-plus years, one side's been shut down. We are now looking at getting it back up and running, and funding to do this. Then we will rebuild the current site that's operating now, so we are working on that.
You see during that, we hope you're granting?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is that your point? Is that not your point?
Correct.
That's why you put the vitamin in here, while Robert put it in?
Correct. And then also, we just had USW and Branch Construction all gave us green lights, and we haven't gotten any negative inspections. Yeah, inspections, and it is up and going, and we're, we're in perfect.
Well, as you know, and I've been down there a lot, and I understand, big time, I really do. I guess Robert will let me go down there again, I'm not sure, I'm restricted.
Gil, that's probably another thing we need to, we can do that on another time, right?
No, no, let's talk about it, not that, not that. But just the wastewater treatment, okay? And I hate to sound like a bad guy.
We've already done, we're working on getting the funding for that, we've made the statement.
No, I'm not talking about funding. I'm talking about the stability of the wastewater treatment.
We've gotten the engineers, municipal engineers have all targeted with it. We're ready to move on to the next side of them, are you all? You don't wanna go, okay, what just transpired out of the wastewater?
I would like to talk about a little bit more, I mean...
Okay.
Thank you. I have four.
Okay.
I think...
You've got it.
All I'm saying is that, I'd like to say this, you said that the wastewater treatment plant is running pretty good, but it is, it is, it does have some things like the boards and some different items, that just, I think we all need to be aware of that, we may have to spend some more money in maintenance, just like the early disconnection goes out at your home.
We're already, that's it, we're in the process of that, we're definitely being repaired this week.
I understand, I'm just saying that, gosh, Clay, what I'm saying is that, council, please be aware that we may have to have some more large expenditures, because we're not redone as with the lawyers and some of those things, we really are not. And that's okay, if you took a, if you took a strict efficiency, right, look at it, you wouldn't want to be redone in the process of it. But just be aware, we may be in some...
Gil, this is one we need to put it as a budget item in our, in the budget, just because we knew these repairs were coming.
And I don't feel like a bad guy here.
We've already talked, addressed them, and now we're having to use up that funding this week. Anyone else? Sir?
Taylor, would you please elaborate about your recent visit to the wastewater treatment plant?
No, I'm not.
You don't want to?
No, I don't care to, I don't think we need to go there, he just said that, and we don't.
You don't think the citizens or council should know what transpired?
No. I think it's usually not required, and, you know, pointless.
I'll add a little bit then, I'll leave Gil's involvement out, but as of recently, multiple items, multiple meetings, has stated that our wastewater treatment plan is broken, our wastewater treatment plan is about to run into our canals, and it's not functioning correctly. We have reports, which council has received, has been in agenda packets, I have them from two different upper water operations, that's from USW in twenty-twenty-two, and also just recently from Branch. So to put everybody's mind at ease, our...
Counsel.
I would just like to clarify that the hoop's not about to run into the canal.
Well, yeah, we have rumors all the time.
These are statements, they're...
We have statements all the time.
They shouldn't be used as a fear factor. No, you can't, don't, pick me a quick BS in the citizens.
Citizens, everybody? BS, and they want to...
The inspectors, Gil.
What is that? Coming suit, now they're in? How did they get, I never saw that.
You didn't see these?
No, I really didn't, Russell, I'm not being...
You didn't?
I'm not, okay, I'm...
Well, we have a complaint of...
But here's the point.
Sir, we have a complaint of trespassing there, and we've, we've had to open up an investigation now. Homeland Security requires, I'll read this, an owner, agent, manager, operator, or persons in charge of a public water supply system that furnishes water for public or private use, or a wastewater system that provides wastewater services for public or private use, shall notify the commission of Homeland Security immediately of the following events: an unusual or unexplained unauthorized entry at property of public water supply or wastewater system. And that is, we've, we've gotta be careful, we're having, this is now thrown upon us now.
Listen, can we just stop and, have we finished with the grant discussion? Can we move on, and then you can get to that later on?
It's been reported to me that the door is left open in the wastewater.
Only when people are working there, or working inside.
So doors are left open, but not...
I don't know what that means, doors left open.
These are the signs of the gate?
I've never been there, I've never been there, so I don't know.
I'm showing you, there's correct signage, but when employees are coming in and out, yes, the gates get left open, they're not gonna close and lock them every time they come and go.
I don't know what door was left open.
These are the gates of the wastewater treatment plant, and it clearly states, authorized personnel only, danger open tanks, do not enter confined space.
So if I wanted to go visit, as an Alderman, if I wanted to visit the wastewater plant, what would be the policy, what's the procedure?
Great question.
I'm working on that right now. But it would be to contact the operator there, proper attire, proper, things going in and out, you can explain to the operations how it works.
And could I bring a, and could I bring a visitor with me?
I, that's totally up to me, I don't, we have to go with that.
That's something council would need to decide with policies.
It would be by Homeland Security.
Homeland Security, EPA thing.
And we just saw thirteen, and move on to the next, it's getting late, man.
Yeah, I know, it's getting late.
And some of this is just as important as other things that we've been...
Okay, so item number fourteen.
Do they vote on thirteen?
Oh, okay.
There's no vote, I mean, we're just so, I guess you're saying, we're just working on it.
I make the motion that we authorize Robert to, to approve Robert to go after these grants.
Continue working on grants.
Yeah.
I have a second.
Everybody have a second?
I can grab that.
Okay.
All in favor? Thank you.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, discussion, consideration, take action for existing STR ordinance. Do I have a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss, I make the motion to discuss.
I have a second.
You okay, Gil? Give me a thought of what I'm gonna give myself on.
Real quick, Chief Coleman and myself have worked hard negotiating with the STR group to come up with an agreeable ordinance that keeps the city out of a class action lawsuit, which we did. Many of the citizens' complaints are already addressed in current ordinances, and PD has gotten a lot stricter at getting this done. The other common complaint we hear is limiting the number of people. Uh, I'd like to be one thing clear, that cannot be done by the city. Uh, only an SDR host can control, uh, that for, that is addressed in their contract with the renter. PD or other citizens can report the number of people to the owner and PD, and PD can do as the owners instruct. But, uh, we've got a nice, uh, ordinance already that, like I said, we negotiated. Is it, do you not have anything we need to add or into that?
Nothing to add to that ordinance, but I think our nuisance ordinance needs to be tightened up a little so that we at least have quick guidelines when they go.
Good idea.
When they have to go to, to a residence more than once. They, they should have some, you know, guidelines so that they're not stuck making decisions on the fly.
Very good point. Um, and Clay, I offer a nuisance ordinance that was very well written that never got in front of council. Would you like me to provide that to you again?
Sure. I would like to see it.
Sure. Is that no problem with, with the?
Absolutely not.
Right?
Absolutely not. Uh. Yeah, I mean, that would be good. You know, a lot, a lot of our issues are already addressed in, in, in the ordinances we have in law, but yeah, if we can do something, but I think it's most important that we get a handle on the, the owners and, and they'll control those renters, which we've been trying to do. I mean, how, how's it that you hear about there in the city, there in the offices there? Does it seem to be a lot more good communication?
They're issuing more citations for people who are violating, but I'm getting a lot less resident complaints directly to us. They're going directly to the police and the police are taking care of it.
Okay.
From what I see.
Is it turning around a little bit? Where they're going worse, please?
Yes, yeah. I'm seeing a lot more reports, a lot more tickets going violation because the parties, we have a ton of pardon violations that get written and paid for. So on my enforcement side of it, I'm seeing, I'm seeing production from what our offices are doing.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, yeah, I, where I'm at is I'd, I'd like to see this, review the SDR ordinance and see if we can tighten it up even further. If it's possible to do that.
We can do that. Can we make a note of that to bring that in front of council next, uh, workshop?
Workshop?
Yeah. Definitely workshop.
Yes, sir.
One comment involving SDRs on this. Is SDRs are mainly controlled by D restrictions. D restrictions is handled by JVIC. So perhaps we should, should reach out to JVIC and ask them what they can help with this conflict of, of D restrictions. Everything I've ever read, pirates, Spanish, all the news articles. Whenever it comes to SDRs, it's handled through the HOA. So I'd like to see JVIC give us some input and get involved in this.
Well, that would mean they'll have to get seventy-five percent of the homeowners in that area to change that D restriction. And that's probably not gonna happen with the fact that people want the, they have the SDR, they have the, the income and they don't want to get rid of it, so that, that cat's out of the bag already. They work really bad.
I'm not sure that's correct. They're not correct, but it means that mainly falls under their jurisdiction. I definitely think their input would be beneficial.
I think we'd get a point, but. Anytime we can, we can work closer with JVIC and get them involved and keep that relationship going and make things better, it's a good thing. So I, I would have no problem at all having their comment, uh, in involvement. I just think it makes this longer.
So no action and we'll just get on it for next? Okay.
Can I have a visit with JVIC as well?
Okay.
And I'm sure, um, I can see what your reaction will say. It doesn't, we're the. Uh, I can stand by it too. I mean, we have different groups doing different things.
Gil, we're, we're trying to go ahead. Let's keep moving a little bit.
You don't wanna hear that, do you?
Yeah, uh, uh, number fifteen, discussion, consideration, take action for possible voter suppression in intimidation claims investigation. Uh, Alderman Jones, you accused the mayor of voter suppression, right?
Oh, God. Actually, um, there is something on the city website that, um. Yes, I did. I think that, that Pam Jocelyn and others did a lot of work to go clear up what, what myth are out there about voting. And you've left, um, something on the city website that says that what I stated was illegal, but what I said is not illegal.
No, I stated there was misinformation. Um. Your exact quote was vote here in May election and change it back and vote for the November election from your previous. Uh, we as a city or elected officials should not be given voter instruction or interpretation. Uh, for we do not enforce election codes. We furnish the information provided by the state.
And the second part of that was I, I suggested that she go to the voter officials and talk to them. But, uh, it seems nobody has a copy of that part of it, but that's the second part. And I also apologized in a private group on social media and removed that, that thing. If you would have come to me and talked to me about it, that would have been helpful.
If, if, if it was wrong, or, I mean, why did you delete it if it was wrong?
Well, I let everybody, everybody know that, uh, it could be misunderstood.
You then do it for the council?
Pardon me? Pardon me?
I haven't heard you done it here at council.
So you want me to state that what I said couldn't have been misunderstood in social media?
Well, we're discussing about letting everybody know and being transparent and answering the public's questions and informing the public.
Because my, you said my statement was voter suppression?
Well, if I could look up the statement, then I'd be able to confirm that. I don't have it in front of me. I didn't know that this is, uh, was gonna be an interrogation tonight.
It's far from it. We're just trying to. We've got serious accusations that we have got to address. You, and you got the information Friday like everyone else?
I have the statement here. I came prepared. If you just give me a moment to find it. This is the report you entered. Matter of fact, it's in the back of the packets. Everybody has this.
Oh, yeah. Starts off with. It's in the minutes from last meeting.
It resembles a point that you actually submitted.
It's not, I don't, I don't see it, guys.
Right here it is, number one. You bring Pam's research, which was emailed to all members. That's where it starts off with. Isn't that it? Share the legal opinion, what I stated on social media was, it's already there. Would you like to read it, Ms. Jones? I found it.
Pam's research, which was emailed to all members of council or city's attorneys. Ultimatum, ask for a legal opinion to clear up any misinformation or misleading official statements from the city.
In that legal opinion, do you recall what that was?
I think that was a request. To clear up misinformation.
Okay, um. Well, I believe it says exactly when I posted. The weight page on the city website.
Oh, it's number four. I suspect that you've refused to take advice from our city attorneys to continue on your own vendetta of voter suppression and intimidation.
Voter suppression. Uh. But the reply was sent to all council, I thought you said.
Well, it's on the city website that you, you, uh, are telling people that what I told people was illegal, but even, but what I said to people was not illegal.
Um, have you had a conversation with any of our state representatives?
Yes.
And what was, what was that conversation? How'd that go?
I was told to, that what I said was not illegal and to always refer voting things to the, the voting officials.
You wouldn't ask that you should take that off?
Take what off?
Take what, your statement off, the, off the, as you did, as you deleted what you wrote.
Actually, that, that some, a state official suggested to me to remove it and to, um, let people know it could be misunderstood.
So as far as the mayor suppression, voter suppression, you wouldn't?
Well, what's on the city website is misinformation too.
No, it's just information on the same thing that they've.
That what I said was not illegal.
Okay. Like I said, we don't, we, I don't advise anyone giving, uh, election advice. So do we need to continue this investigation?
No.
The, um, do I have a motion to discontinue this investigation?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second to discontinue the investigation?
Yes, I, I'll make that second.
All in favor?
I'm in favor. I don't even, this is your item.
No, this is what's came from Taz's report from last week that's been entered into the minutes. All of these things we're going over was from Taz's last meeting.
And these are serious offenses that we have got to address to protect the city.
That was part of one of the charges.
Part one, okay. Uh, item number sixteen, discussion, consideration, and take action for possible misuse of funds investigation.
What funds are we talking about?
We're not ready to discuss yet. Do we have a motion to discuss?
Oh.
May I have a second?
Have a second?
I have a second. What funds are we specifically talking about?
Alderman Jones, you've made an accusation of two point three million dollars spent without council approval, correct?
I never said that it was spent. I've been asked for where the two point three million dollars in encumbered money is.
Yeah. So what's the deal?
So may I ask what encumbered funds are?
Encumbered funds are kind of better existed.
I did an open record request, um, in twenty twenty and asked for the encumbered money because the park board had encumbered money because that was money the park board had earned towards the playgrounds. And the city secretary at that time sent me an entire page of what was, what monies were encumbered, including about a hun, almost a million dollars in hotel occupancy tax. Encumbered money has been set aside for use for certain projects. Just like the park board's money was set aside. There was police officer, police department money on there too. Was totaled two point three million dollars.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the park board from when you were there.
The park board had seventy-five thousand dollars encumbered.
In this year's budget?
In the twenty twenty encumbered money.
Okay.
So.
But encumbered money was not brought up in the, in the recent budgets.
Encumbered money was not.
Now, I believe encumbered funds gets added to the general and overall accounts of the city. Any monies that are not spent or utilized become encumbered and add to the city's overall accounts, am I correct?
Correct.
So by your question, what happened to the two point three million of encumbered money? Well, you answered your own question. Encumbered money stays in the accounts until it's used. Am I correct on that? Was my understanding?
And so was it, was the, where, what, what happened with the hotel tax?
It's in the city's bank accounts.
It's still there.
It's encumbered.
It's still there. It hasn't been used. Shouldn't that have been brought up during the budget? Meetings?
It was. It's a line item.
The encumbered funds is a line item.
No. I was not there for that meeting. I'm not answering that.
No, not necessarily. We promote our budget on our annual revenue. That's what we work our budget on. Now, any encumbered funds, leftover funds, we either roll over to the next year's budget or we put those money back and just take special projects later in case we have emergencies that we need or we put them into certificate of deposits. That is my understanding of encumbered funds.
So it's there.
It's there as an item.
But without having an audit, then we don't know where it's at right now.
Well, it hadn't gone anywhere. I mean.
I didn't say it went anywhere. I just like to know where it's at.
And, and that, like we said, that's, that's coming, but for you, the thing is, for you to make a accusation at me. Uh, for you to make an accusation at me, I guess that's, that's the issue I have. I mean, is it?
Well, I've sent some emails asking you about it, but you don't reply.
No, you didn't. I'm, I don't, I don't own this particular item.
Well, many of them, so I've sent emails for those.
I'm talking about this specific item right here.
Okay.
I have a document where you say Clay has spent money without city council approval. I have documents, work orders, and invoices to her. Would you like to present those items now?
I didn't know I needed to bring it with me, but yes, I did a, um, an open record request for branch construction. As I understand it, there's, um, we approved about a hundred thousand dollars in, or not quite that much. But, uh, um, but more money's been spent for branch construction and, um, than what's on the line items.
But Robert oversees branch construction, not the man. And what are we gonna do when we have water leaks? We're gonna get on the picks.
Okay.
So therefore, not only did Clay not spend the money, Robert spent it and it was on emergency services. Correct?
That's true.
Did, but council did not approve those emergencies?
At, at the time, it, no.
We, we, we.
Cause you won't.
That's what Robert's pulling.
We had to get these things fixed.
True, true.
I couldn't wait for a city council meeting to say, okay, you're not gonna have water until the next council meeting.
Right.
Do we have emergency funds for that?
I guess what I'm saying is that it'd be nice if we had more information about where the money's being spent.
We do. We get our financials every quarter. City council is not an oversight committee for day-to-day operations. If there's a five thousand dollar repair that needs to be done, I don't want a phone call or an emergency meeting. That's why we have heads of departments to handle those issues. Then we get reports when we go to council meeting from Branch, what they did. We get quarterly reports from our director of finance where the monies went. These items have been in place and been working for years.
Well, it'd be helpful if it was more clear.
To mention encumbered funds, I just checked my phone. Encumbered funds are funds that are encumbered for specific purpose.
We just we just discussed that.
So if we have encumbered funds in the budget, it should be spelled out exactly what they're to be used for. In theory and in fact, well, that's just for a period of time, one budget year. Has the budget year changed? Has this changed? You can change that. You can send the money and do real necessary.
Thank you, Gil.
So is that what we're talking about? I mean, are we just?
Now you got me confused.
So I guess what we're I'm asking now is do we need to have an investigation?
No.
Or not? So we make a motion to put this to bed?
Yes.
So what is that? Not an investig- not an investigation. Do I have a motion for a non-investigation on item number sixteen?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I wanna abstain on this.
Three want to abstain and one sign you vote.
Abstain.
Number seventeen, uh, this is one that I'm not sure of. Motion to combine seventeen and eighteen? Can we do that? Just kind of hustle it up?
Sure.
To speed it up, I make the motion that the mayor combines item number seventeen and eighteen.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Do I have a motion to discuss discussion, consideration, and take action of employee complaints against elected officials, employee turnover, war zone claims at the city hall, and elected officials' policies? And discussion and consideration, take action for possible mayor mayor's official oppression investigation?
I make that motion to discuss.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I gotta ask. What's an employee complaint?
I'm I'm just about to read.
And which employees?
Alderman Jones, you've claimed that ten employees have left during my term?
Uh huh.
I can.
I said I did not say during your term. I said in the past few years that ten employees have left.
Chief Hyman, you know, which I can read his resignation letter if you'd like me to. And he was replaced with Chief Garvey, who's been a wonderful addition. Lieutenant John McQuinn, he had his own reasons that included the same as the chief's. Anna Mondragon was with health issues and was.
Passed away.
Shall we do a quick moment of silence?
Yes, please. I was considering that. Maybe we have a moment of silence for Anna, please, guys. Thank you, Dennis. She was a sweet, sweet, sweet lady. Debbie, we have her statement. And then Noah had personal reasons. Did I miss anyone?
Um, Crystal Dosia.
Was that there, Ma?
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, I guess it was.
I didn't say it was during your administration, but you're also missing Lupe and Sean.
Well, that was not earmarked.
I didn't say it was during your. I said in the past few years.
Well, do you want to go over everybody then? Crystal Dosia, it turned out that she didn't fit the city's needs. Sean Hutchinson had a major traumatic family event that he wanted to be closer to family and.
Good night.
I have three finishes.
Sean, Crystal, and Lupe.
Lupe?
That's who she mentioned.
That's currently.
And Noah. That's ten.
Let me check.
Can't talk about the rushing ordeal and Noah, I believe, released his statement.
How would you say the move is in the in the city hall?
We can walk in. There's a lot going on, but we get along.
Everybody's pretty happy? Would you say it's a war zone?
Only for snacks.
Our readings that go into nine o'clock.
Is it really? Okay, well, like I said, these are claims that are made and are in record and we're just trying to address them.
And these are things that I've been was told, so.
But you entered them in.
Yeah.
In your saying the.
Yeah.
Public record. Yes, go ahead.
Like I read, in the past few years, the city has lost two city secretaries, a city administrator, a police chief of police, director of operations, a lieutenant, two sergeants that I'm aware of. Our city employees call city hall a war zone. That is a direct quote, Mayor. You've created this war zone, not me. Once again, this is from Alderman Montez Jones's report that she added into the record.
Has Alderman Mondray and Jones been in the city hall for hours at a time, weekly, if not daily?
Not daily, but they they've been here.
Hardly.
Y'all visit?
I've visited with you.
No, no, no.
No, I mean, in the in the city hall.
No, you've been very cordial. You've been you've been very cordial.
But wait a minute, I was that encouraged to come to city hall. I was encouraged to be a part of staff meetings. I was encouraged to be here. That's what I did, and I don't think I ever said anything out of the way.
No, 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 it's it's not that. What we're looking at is the hours that was taken away from doing city business that for them trying to be very cordial.
I'm comfortable with it. I didn't call to turn you on.
Okay.
Let me set this up.
Okay.
Alderman Jones has been in my office once. Very cordial. But she visits Debbie several times, but I would mean.
But Debbie's.
Yeah.
And have I come and hung out with you guys?
I've seen you briefly. I've got so many departments that I handle. Sometimes it all floated in now. I never see you.
And I mean, things been pretty cordial or any confrontation, hostility or anything? I mean.
I don't want to put him on.
Okay, okay, yeah, right. Don't go next to him. Yeah, that's up.
I can add to like council members, Russell and I've had some screaming matches. That's how it goes.
Russell and I have screaming matches.
Clay and ice cream at each other. Here, like you're yelling ice cream at each other. That's great. It's a democracy. It's healthy. However, I have recently been made aware of an alderman coming in and raising his voice and screaming at our employees. Gil, before I go any further, would you like to speak to your defense on this?
No, I'm not going to.
I have been reported that on more than one occasion, Alderman Mondray has entered the office and raised his employ- raised his voice to multiple of our employees loud, condescending, aggressive. This is absolutely unacceptable. I'm not doing this to throw mud at Alderman Mondray. I'm doing this to protect our city. Can't do this. Wasn't just one employee I got this complaint from. It was multiple. I was also called just recently that Alderman Mondray came in and snatched a piece of paper off of somebody's desk without permission and started hollering, what's this, what's this, and tried to walk out with it. There has to be limitations to what our council can and can't.
That's very serious.
We can't.
Will you use it from later?
You that we're not looking for that, so.
No, no, we have to.
Uh, but we can, we need to.
No, no, we have to.
Well, if you should start to do it, any kind of voice stuff. He's in special clothes.
This will be a we're trying to determine if we need further investigation.
Isn't that what we're discussing right now? Hostile work environment and what have you?
Yep.
Okay. So that's some instances just lately that's come across me. I have a wonderful relationship with staff. I'm kind of their go to. I always have been. We I bring in ice creams. We have cooking parties and everything. I really like to keep that back and forth open relationship. So they'll call me and vent or communicate or ask questions before they call someone else.
We've also had some complaints from vendors. How would you say the vendors' relationship is with the city in general? Have we had issues with Alderman Jones or Alderman Mondray interfering and trying to instruct vendors even through even though our engineers have already provided a scope of work?
Not with Alderman Jones. I've heard some words from about the council. I mean, Alderman off from there. So is actually what, ma'am?
Well, do you don't recall some of them?
No.
We'll we'll get four more complaints then.
I think we should and. I'm sorry, I'm some of it, but.
You don't recall telling branch construction that we shouldn't hire you, we can't afford to pay you, we won't pay you, and I let you.
I denied that.
You denied that?
Absolutely.
We'll look into that, that.
This is why we're needing to get some elected officials' policies. We've actually never needed them until now when you didn't make that happen.
I thought that's the reason why we hired Olson and Elton in the first place was to to write policies and procedures.
That's not the only reason we hired you.
Thankfully needed a need to say, don't raise your voice or don't threaten our contractors. This is new.
I'm not saying that. We just need some policies and procedures in place is what I'm suggesting.
Yes, and and we've always had some, and we've just had to add on to them now. We've got a policy and procedures books.
You you have a policy and procedure book?
Yeah, you've seen it. You you took it home to work on it one time.
No, that's not anything official. That's just what that's just what we don't have anything official.
I I gave those to you to work on. Okay, so hey.
Go ahead.
It's getting late.
Yeah.
So we need to open an investigation. Are you on the agreement?
I agree. I would think that we would need an executive session if these are employee complaints.
Okay, I I have much more to add, and I really don't feel like getting into it. It's been a long night. I don't want anybody to feel attacked, but these items need to be addressed. So are you looking for a motion, Mayor?
No.
I want to thank everybody for hanging in there.
Thank you, guys.
What time has it been out of service?
I could have it right out in front.
You were right. It doesn't matter to me. What about the complaints from the city employees about Alderman Jones and the lawsuits it's caused? I mean, those are all public information. You know, one thing I do want to bring up before we move forward is, you know, the people have the right to know. We need to be transparent. Everything needs to be right out there. Why did the city, why did you, Alderman Jones, never release the official complaint that a previous employee filed about against you? That was public information.
I do have an attorney general ruling that I can release it.
No, the the official complaint against you that is.
I do have an attorney general ruling that says that it is public information. It's been redacted with a few things. But no, I have not released it to the public and social media or whatnot.
But why not? We say that you say it most of all. The public has a right to know. This official complaint against you from our city employee is public information.
And the four fifteen thousand dollar decision investigation from Olson and Elton said that it was, let me find the.
The citizens have a right to know, right? No hard questions. Using your words.
We've completed a thorough investigation into Chief of Police Brad Hyman's claims against you. Do you want me to go on?
Yes, please.
Retaliation, discrimination, creating hostile work environment, defamation of character, slander and libel, official oppression and harassment, violation of Texas penal code. On behalf of the city, we did not find evidence to substantiate these claims. We make no findings related to personal civil liability or criminal action. We'll be making recommendations to the council how to proceed. Thank you for cooperating during the investigation. The city of Jamaica Beach takes these allegations seriously and is committed to conducting business with the highest degree of ethical standards. I wish you well in the future.
And do you know that was directed to the city?
No, sir. This was my letter. This is my letter from Olson and Elton. It is it is to Lorraine Jones, and I got this on June twenty first, twenty twenty two.
And they were hired by the city to make sure the city was not liable for the civil the civil suit.
And they told and they told me that I could do whatever I wish with it. They told me that I could do whatever I wish with that letter.
But the letter was addressed or was addressing the city law, not your personal liability.
The city. So what that letter states and why we hired the attorneys was to make sure the city was not liable for Alderman Jones's actions. What the lawyers got back to us and said is, no, the city's not liable for your actions. Am I correct? So the city is not liable for your actions. That's what they concluded. An employee filed an official complaint about one of our aldermen threatening a lawsuit. We reached out to our law our legal immediately had it to do a complete, entire, full investigation, interview us all. And what they came back with and said, no, you guys are okay. The city cannot be sued for Alderman Jones's actions.
For for the false accusations.
If anybody would like copies of these complaints, they're public information. I'll make them readily available because the people have a right to know.
Complaints, uh, with the city.
It's all in the it's four pages of complaints.
From our polling?
From from Chief Hyman.
Oh, Hyman, that's different story.
No, that's what we've been discussing. That's what we're discussing right now is Chief Hyman. You know, any any other on on that particular one? I just have a couple of things I want to read real quick.
So we're gonna take action on that, right?
Yes, uh, we don't want to end the discussion yet. We need to mostly address, because we have one other charge, is the mayor mayor of oppression that I would like to address. You've accused the mayor of oppression and trying to figure out of what? You have a right to.
Well, this moment, I'm I you're saying I've accused you?
Yes, it's on your on your what you submitted as a document.
Well, I don't have it with me now, but when I read or the definition of oppression and intimidation for and that's what I was referring to.
Okay, but that's a serious charge.
It is, and that's how I how I, um, that's what I said.
And it was on the agenda item, and you didn't think to bring your documentation to support it?
No, I didn't know this was gonna be an interrogation. No, I didn't know this was going to be an interrogation or public shaming.
Alderman Jones, you keep saying this. You submitted all this. You asked for all of this. So we're complying. We're, we're trying to do our due diligence.
Exactly.
We want to, we want to put this stuff to bed. We want to clear it up.
Okay.
These, these are us reacting and trying to help you legitimize all of this. This isn't a tag. I, I really, I don't want to be working on this stuff, guys. I want to be working on our infrastructure, our cap rate, our five-year plan. But this stuff keeps coming up. All right? We want to put these to bed so we can move our city forward.
Okay, then let's, then let's, then let's put it to bed.
Well, after we finish this investigation, see if we've ever warranted. Um, you know. There, it's getting late, but, um. You've, you've spoken about the mayor and his responsibilities. And, or, I'm just trying to get this straight. I'm trying to remember exactly all you said. Um. Are you familiar with a mayor's responsibilities?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, and I'm not gonna, I'm not, I don't want to drill you and ask you free twenty. I'm not gonna read that. And, and are you familiar with what a alderman's responsibilities are?
Yes.
Okay, because it's all on T M L and it's, you can, you can get, it's all listed. Anyone can look at it and see, gives you what the types of cities are, what the responsibilities are.
General law, city structures, yeah.
Well, we're not worried about the others, but yes, it does explain this difference. Yeah. Um. You know. Where am I at? You know, you, you all talked about a strong mayor. You know, we've always had a strong mayor position here, correct? I mean, are you familiar with that?
No, I understood that we had a, a mayor, uh, excuse me, a council and, uh, um, city administrator.
We've had until, until we change it here.
But that didn't, that...
No, no, we had a city management form of government.
No, we've never had a city management. There again, guys, this is the stuff that is readily available.
No, I'm going by, I'm going by how we operated and, uh, the ordinance that the mayor passed in ninety-nine dash seven, Big Pearson, creating a city manager and city manager's manager form of government. That's it.
No, that is not accurate at all.
You don't, you don't think that's legitimate?
You made that statement this weekend. I've asked our previous mayor just to confirm. The city of Jamaica Beach has always been a strong mayor government. You made that comment that Mr. Morris changed that since he took over and that, that's untrue.
Yeah.
Then what, then what did you make of your ordinance?
What we did is we made a city, we did away with a city administrator.
But you changed, you said it. That's okay.
What we did is we, we took away a two hundred thousand dollar a, a year job. Uh, the, the city manager, sir, please, please.
Okay, please.
Um. That city ma, administrator that we had before still reported to the mayor. He was just one of the department heads. It's the way it's always been. City administrator, city secretary, chief of police. That's the way it's always been. And, and the mayor. They all report directly to the mayor. All the way back through the beginning of, of Jamaica Beach. So, well, there again, this misinformation is the stuff we want to make sure that the citizens are understanding is correct.
I...
When I came in, I, in working with John Brick, I, I didn't see that. I thought everybody reported to him. And he reported to the mayor. And it was in the...
That's cultural mayor.
The mayor operated with him and like a managing partner.
Well, how about if we clear all this up and...
Everybody reported to John Brick. I know.
And put this on the city website to help clarify these kind of things?
It's in our ordinances. I, everybody knows this that's lived here for any time of, of period. You know, uh. I, I chose this, this, to share some of these responsibilities that the city administrator does. We, we got, we've got, uh, Rob in here who is doing an incredible job. He can't... There is, a city administrator will not, cannot do any more than what Rob's doing. Rob has been, been incredible.
I don't know.
One of my many jobs is to protect the city staff from hostile environment and harassment. And I will do everything legal to protect them. Uh. I'm skipping some things, but, uh...
I can just go out of ordinances, Clay, and what I saw on the chair. I really don't have...
Then you need to reread the ordinances.
I will.
Okay? Because this is the type of government we have and we don't need someone else out explaining differently or trying to convince other people. Um.
So to be clear, we are a strong mayor's government. Mayor Morris hasn't changed that. And I don't blame you citizens for being upset. You're getting a lot of false information and, and we, we need to clarify. We need to streamline this.
You know, um. I, I'm ready to wrap this up, uh, but...
I would like to make a motion on seventeen, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Um. Do we have a motion to have an executive session next meeting about employees and elected officials? Do I have a motion for that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I make that motion as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Abstain. Three.
Two. Alderman Jones, are you abstaining or not vote, or?
No. No, no, no.
Uh, the last quick thing. Uh, I just to wrap this up. You know, we've got a list of accomplishments here that's on, on the website. Uh, it's, yes, we've had, um, I inherited a lot of this good stuff and a lot of foresight from other, the other administration. And I thank them for that. We got it finished. We've enjoyed getting this stuff done. Uh, you know, from roadwork to beach to infrastructure. Uh, and then we have a whole list of future plans and stuff that's, that's going on. Uh, it is all budget driven. Uh, I must remind everyone that Jamaica Beach reporters, watchdogs, or any other social media is not monitored, controlled, or seen by staff or supported. The only social media the city participates in is the city's own social, uh, Facebook page and its website. If you have an issue and truly want to, the city to address it, please email or call us. Some still choose to complain of what we are accomplishing, accomplishing, you know, in, in this accomplishments. Um, the, the, the group tries to poke holes in it and, and, you know. Why not be happy for what we've gotten accomplished? The, uh, and how hard the, the staff has worked in making this all happen. I am appalled at the misinformation and the lack of understanding of the government process displayed. It is not the, it, it's not about not knowing. It is the complaining of this. And just because you believe it should be done a certain way does not mean it can be done. The lack of knowledge has and will cost the city time, energy, and resources. Many of these claims we have addressed in today's meeting and previous meetings. My statement here is not about campaigning. It's about calming everyone, holding accountability, and being responsible for what you say. Yes, we have a few small issues as any city does. We are attentive to our citizens and must daily prioritize these tasks and issues at hand. Our staff works hard and bends over backwards to make it happen every day. We as a city have ordinances and state laws to follow on every aspect of running our city. Do not let a feud con you into believing otherwise. Remember, if you have a concern, reach out to me. Reach out to staff. We would love to, to visit you. Don't let this negativity take over Jamaica Beach. We are so much happier than that. No elected official should be debating issues on social media. And it is an honor to be your mayor, and I have always done the right thing. My actions and accomplishments show you this. I enjoy healthy communication with all. Most of you I have visited with or staff has visited with. We address your concerns. Though some may not always agree with our decisions, we do communicate and have always kept transparency in the forefront. Thank you for attending this long-needed council meeting and help keep Jamaica Beach great. Thank you, guys. Uh, listen to your turn. Second. Meeting adjourned.